To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we roll call, please? Here.
Brian.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Your meeting.
Here.
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 All right. The approval of the, our additions to business, I think we had.
None tonight, thank you.
Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Duff.
Second.
Second. Uh, O'Brien. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, approved. Our correspondences and information. We have a few. Michigan Legislature passed a budget which would include some new road funding. We also have a correspondence from a village resident regarding possible considerations with solicitors, solicitations, door to door. We also have a correspondence regarding how to file a complaint for a video cable if there's any issues. And then, there's a notice of hearing with DTE about implementing a cost recovery plan for the next 12 months, ending December 31st, 2026. The final one is legal fee increase.
Motion to receive and file as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Duff, second, by Newman.
Can we call B for discussion?
We can. Let me.
Yeah, friendly.
Okay. Call in B for discussion. Okay, so we have early amendment to approve or to file and receive and file A, C, D, and E in this instance, and a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Or would we like to put B?
Just reviewing that correspondence from the resident, I just had a question as far as, maybe this is for our village attorney, what do other municipalities do to support residents that don't wish to have solicitation at their homes? Is that something that we do from the village standpoint, is that something the resident has to take on themselves?
Well, there's a process through which they have to get permits, so if, if if the resident asks someone who has a permit to leave and they don't leave, then the police issue. But they're entitled to solicit, it's a First Amendment, as long as they're properly, you know, they have the proper permits from the village.
The village can't have a no solicitation list on file for permitted companies that are coming in.
No, the only way that you'd be able to potentially like revoke.
You turn the microphone first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, the only way you'd be able to possibly revoke a permit is if they did something to violate that permit most likely multiple times, or, you know, they didn't file the appropriate information, or there was a trespass issue or something to that effect. But you, you can't prohibit solicitation, just outright prohibit it. People can post no trespassing signs or no solicitation signs, but honestly, you know, if someone's permitted to enter upon property, you know, it'd be a, really a matter of fact in the court if there was a prosecution because that person trespassed, or that person. Yeah, but just any kind of like outright prohibition couldn't do.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna give a kind reminder that new sound system and
Yeah.
with the microphones, the green is on, the red is off, so you guys are speaking, just make sure we're all green. It brings us to the first call to the public.
Motion open.
Second.
We have a motion open and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Right opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items. And there's the consideration of five minute time on it also, so we are open for comment.
Mr. President, before we start, I'll just point out that the timer that used to be on the desk over on Ms. Rhodey's desk, I've hung it back on the bulletin board in the back above the, the whiteboard in, thinking that it might be more visible than anybody that's speaking during public comment. But anyway, that's where it is tonight. We'll see how it goes and maybe it'll end up back on Vicky's desk next time, I'm not sure.
Thank you. All right, call the public's open.
Tom Daley. 2377 Ventura. I'm here today again as always to talk about the Ventura parking. Eleven years ago, significant change was made to the public property at the north end of Ventura Drive. Property was used for 60 years as access for multiple properties on this street, as it was intended and based on the dedication to the village. As I stated last month, there were no issues with this particular property because people were using the area primarily to transit across the right of way onto private properties, they weren't parking in the middle of it, but dedicated public street. I note even the owner of the property at 2377 documented this in a recent letter to the village stating that there was no problem prior to 2012 when changes were begun on the property there. This change was made without full detail or full understanding of the impact on all the parties on public property that were requiring its use. In 2018, an attempt was made by the then council to resolve the issue. While the actions that it enabled mirrored some of the suggestions made by the TIA this past year, those actions have failed to address the issues they attempted to resolve. The failure has been clearly documented to this council, communicated to the village over several years, and led to a commitment from the current council in February to finally correct the situation. Number of solutions were made by the TIA to address the solution, the situation, all but one have been implemented in some fashion and at some point since then without long-term resolution of the problem. The remaining proposal continues to be discounted due to undocumented assertions of right of way for, for private use of right of way for driveways, however, the current issues with the design still exist. Namely, the current driveway is placed in a manner that doesn't meet existing standards adopted by the county or the state. It not only crosses the property line, but it allows vehicles to park two to 12 feet directly in front of the adjacent driveway, over half of that driveway's width. The current driveway approach also has created problem, private property use of significant portions of the shared property that require access for other, require access of vehicles to other properties. I proposed an alternative which addresses concerns with private property use of the right of way for driveways. I have done this to help resolve this issue, even though other properties within 50 feet of this area have not been granted the same provision to have this much driveway out into the right of way. The proposal has limited water runoff impact on the specific area, as it's already 95%, paved covered. This was another issue that was put forward, that's why we didn't want to do the TIA exhibit. I asked the council to move forward with a plan to mitigate the actions previously approved by the village. While many of you were not present when these actions were taken, it's now under your direction as to whether or not the village will act to protect the rights of all residents to use public property in accordance with its dedication. The current proposal provides the property at 2377 on average less street width than, than which is in front of all the other properties in the village, including your own. It's in stark contrast to a request for 25 to 30 feet of private property use, usage, use for, usage of public property for the parking of cars in a driveway. It asks nothing more, actually less than what other village residents have in front of their properties, and it only asks that public property remain open as paved roadway for all to use with shared responsibility. Thank you for letting, allowing to make those comments. One final thought I'd like to bring forward to the council's attention, and it may, may not already have been considered by the council. There's six properties sharing this public street and on a daily basis. As these properties are developed now with new housing, which will occur, it's highly likely they will be developed in a similar manner as done with 2373. This is not in itself good or bad, I don't have anything to say. I don't have a problem with how the property was, was developed next to me. However, it is highly likely that any new building may come with a desire and an expectation of similar solutions to provide driveways in regards to the usage of public right of way for the driveways. I ask that somebody have some, I ask that the village have some kind of a plan to address this potential for request for equal amounts of public right of way for use as driveways on these other properties, is what it's already done for the properties that exist. Thank you.
Miles for the first call.
Motion to close.
Second.
A motion to close in a second, all in favor to close?
Aye.
Close.
Uh, consideration of approving the following consent agenda.
Motion to accept as presented. Or motion to approve as presented, sorry.
Second.
A motion to approve by Duff, second by O'Brien. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Newman.
Yes.
Leiborn.
Yes.
Nikki.
Yes.
Charmini.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
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 Now we have some board appointments. First one is McMahon and Council reappoint Robert Jankowski and Matthew Ramey to the Water Board, Water Management Board with terms expiring 12/31/2028.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve that, and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, thank you gentlemen. Second one is recommendation for Council reappoint Paul Snyder to the Planning Commission with the term expiring 12/31/2028.
Motion.
Second.
Newman, second by Duff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Thank you all for your service, and last one, Council reappoint Diane Brekovich and Amanda Mog to the Parks and Rec Board with terms expiring 12/31/2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who got the second?
Jeremene.
Motion by Duff, second by Jeremene to approve, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, thank you ladies. Presentations, we have Priority Waste, Brent Quiddaquid, who's our municipal relations manager.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be back again, I was here a couple of months ago and said that I'll be back for basically a quarterly update. So what I wanted to do was give you guys an update on where we're at right now. Last time I was here, I promised that we would give access to Wolverine Lake, to the portal system that Priority Waste has. They do have access to that and they have been utilizing it. One thing that was asked is if we could somehow get the residents access to be able to put stuff in the portal. We did do that, so we have opened up a new system in which the resident can go online onto the Village of Wolverine Lake website that Priority Waste has, go down, submit whatever they want to submit, they get an email and text message update based on their complaint, or whatever they need from us. Since we've started that program, it seems like our response time has gotten better to any issues. Since the beginning of November, there have been 13 issues that were sent in. Of that 11 have been done and 11 were completed immediately within 24 hours or next day when they were completed. One of the biggest issues that we had in the 13 tickets was on November 3rd. On November 3rd, we weren't able, due to breakdowns, we weren't able to complete our compost route. That's where a lot of the complaints were. I did notify the village early the next morning that we weren't able to complete them, I also put up a map. I gave them a map of where we weren't able to complete, with our plan on doing it first thing that day, we were able to do that. So we were, we've been able to, to open up the communication lines quite a bit more, and our services have improved. Do you have any questions for me, or anything that you guys need?
Was it your truck that broke down on Glengarry and Tampa? I was going down the street in Glengarry and your, your truck was like, the, the engine hood was up and it was blocking the street around 10:30?
This morning?
No, on the, no.
On the 3rd?
Last, last week.
Last week, uh, I do not believe so, but it could have been, they would have notified me and I wasn't notified of it. Or it wasn't down for very long, or they had like window washer fluid that they had to put in or something along those lines.
It wasn't down very long, but it, the back end of it was sticking out on the Glengarry, so we did direct traffic around until they were actually
Okay.
able to get it started to get it onto Tampa, out of the direction, so yeah, it was broken down for a short period.
Okay, they, they didn't, usually if it's not broken down for a long period of time, they may not notify me of it, so I'll make sure that, that we stay out of the road if the truck breaks down, so I do apologize about that.
Mr. President, I'd like to open to the public, just to see if anybody has any questions directly. Motion open.
Second.
A motion open, uh, in a second, open the public, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we can. Open public, people have questions or concerns, because there have been emails and posts about kind of the efficiency, I guess the biggest thing is.
Okay.
I was coming through that it's not all happening on the same day, or multiple times and pass-throughs, I, you know, they come the next day possibly, but it seems like there's areas that are missed and I don't have specifics.
Yeah.
But it's consistently the same areas.
Mm-hmm.
So that seems more of a logistics.
Yeah.
Planning.
Yeah, yeah, so we do have a breadcrumbs map that, that we utilize. I will have our logistics driver coordinator pull those and send those over to me, so I can identify. I think he spoke about, I think Ventura was actually one of them. I think part of that was due to, honestly, it was a little bit small sometimes where someone was parked, but so we, what we would do is if a street is blocked, we leave and then we come back, or our driver for whatever reason, you know, is full, he goes to the landfill dumps and comes back. So sometimes that's why you see the driver leave halfway through a street and everyone goes, oh my gosh, they left, they're gonna, I'm gonna be missed. Well, they're probably going back to dump and then they'll come back, but the round trip does take about an hour to an hour and a half to be able to do.
Motion to close to the public?
Second.
A motion to close in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I have a few questions.
Hmm.
Um, I might have missed it, but what, what is the expected response time when a service complaint is logged? You mentioned that we get that email, potentially a text message, and then what does that look like after that?
So, um, the, the response time is within 24 hours or one business day, and like I said, when I looked at everything, I, I can see all the tickets. There was two that were, are still in process that I, that I spoke with the person, with the LDC, and they said that they were, they had to go on and complete it, but everything's within, within one business day is the expectation.
So I logged a complaint on Monday evening.
Okay.
Haven't heard back, and my trash can's still sitting at the end of my driveway.
Oh, what's your address, if you don't mind giving it?
Yeah, it's 1559 Schenken. So not that it's the end of the world, but just from a user perspective, just trying to better understand what some of our residents might be experiencing.
Yeah.
It sounds like that might not be on your radar.
Yeah, yeah, if you logged the complaint, I mean, I can, I can pull the portal up right now.
Yeah, so it would be there, because I did get an email, I didn't get a text, which is fine, but I got an email right back saying, yes, it's been logged and someone will be in touch with you.
And no one called you?
No, which is, I mean, again, it's not the end of the world, but just.
But we should be able to contact you.
Here we are, 48 hours later, so I guess just what that expectation is.
Yeah, it's supposed to be 24 hours of a response, so yeah, I will get with our team on that one.
And do you know, does our village have consistent teams working, supporting the same neighborhoods?
Yes, you have consistent teams supporting.
Are you providing those reports that you mentioned about the service model, or I guess the metrics that you're using to, to provide to us tonight? Are you able to share that with the village on either a monthly or quarterly basis, so we have an idea of what that looks like?
Yeah, I can, I can share those on a quarterly basis, or, or monthly basis if that's what you feel like you need to see. Also, with the portal access, the, the people at the village can actually have access to it, so they can see it also.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Yep, so they have access to it, so they can see the complaints that have been logged in. We're still transitioning them into that a little bit, because this thing kind of just came out, but yeah, they'll be able to see every single complaint that's come in that's been logged.
And then how do, how do you gauge your success as a company? Is it based on how many, I guess, services you provide, it's how many customers you have, it's how many complaints you receive or don't receive, what does that look like?
So there's a couple different, so some of them, part of it is the complaints. And then our pickup accuracy percentage is the biggest one, what our pickup accuracy is for the day. And then also, if something is missed or delayed, it's how quickly we made that turnaround time.
Thank you.
How do you know something's missed if nobody complains?
I mean, we, it's kind of hard to.
More based on complaints than
Yeah, yeah.
Accuracy.
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
Well, that's kind of how we, yeah.
Okay. So that's where it comes from.
So since you were last here, a couple times, yard waste hasn't been picked up, and I've used the online portal and it's gotten immediate ticket notification, and then it's been, it was picked up the last time within 24 hours and picked up, and, well, he made the attempt, it was blocked, so they didn't finish the pickup. But overall, it's been a better response time, so that's been good to see. But at the same time, around the village, we have just this past week, a large section off of Wolverine Drive that wasn't picked up on Monday. It got picked up yesterday, but why, and this has happened before, we've had entire streets not picked up.
Yep.
Which, you know, why is that happening on a not infrequent rate? I mean, it seems to happen at least a couple times a month, where I'm hearing complaints or driving down a street and seeing garbage sitting there. Sometimes, not, not on Tuesday, but on Wednesday or Thursday even. What is, even, you're saying you have regular teams that do this, do these routes.
Yeah.
What's the cause of this, that they're missing entire sections?
So we have regular teams that do the routes, but there's a potential that there is a sub-driver on the route, but to me, it sounds like if it's that frequent, you're saying a couple times a month, is that what you said?
It seems that way, I could be, it could be, I could be overstating, but I can say like, for one point, it was Manzano that was missed, and another time it was a road off of Lat Road, and it was, you know, it was one of these side roads, but, you know, and their garbage wasn't picked up till Thursday.
Yeah.
In fact, I went, when I found out about it and drove over, there's your truck.
Yeah.
Just having picked up on Thursday, and this was in the middle of summer, so not an ideal time to have garbage sitting out there for multiple days.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, that's kind of where, it's, it seems like it's too infrequent, or too frequent versus what people would expect.
Yeah.
For the service that we're paying for.
Yeah, so you like that there is turnaround time on the complaints, but we need to see less complaints coming in, essentially.
Right.
Where we're, yeah.
And then also, what is a good pickup accuracy percentage in priority's eyes?
99.1 usually is a good pickup accuracy for us.
And so if you missed, like yesterday, at least one street.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was, I know Alberton didn't get picked up, and I think others didn't as well. Your percentage was obviously significantly lower than that. And, so, I guess what I'm saying is, what does that look like, like, when you miss a street, how does that pull that down and?
Yeah, it pulls it down and then it pulls the driver's performance down, obviously, and then it gets so much that we do have to take measures on that. But that's, yesterday, I, I didn't, I didn't notice that there was a ton of stuff that came in as misses, but I could be mistaken, but I review all of my portals three times a week, and I didn't notice much when I reviewed it today.
Okay. Dave, how much, in terms of, because now we have two avenues that people are submitting complaints, both directly to priority and then through the office. And so I'm just wondering, based on what you've heard from the staff and everything, over the last, since, let's say, the last six weeks or so, how has it been in the office compared to what it was say before then?
I'd say probably the overall number of calls is down a little bit. The calls that we do get, I think, come from people who say that they've made prior reports to, of missed pickups, and they don't feel like they should have to continue to call when they have the same problem over and over again. So it's really expressing more frustration with the fact that it appears to be a recurring problem than anything else, the ones that we're hearing from. So we have some people who still are of the opinion that it should be our responsibility to notify priority. And like I got an email yesterday morning from a woman over on Del Monte, whose yard waste hadn't been picked up. And so I put that into the portal, and it did get picked up later that day. But again, she sees it as our responsibility, not hers, but there are a number of people, I think, that are taking advantage in making direct reports to priority.
No, I think it's much more usable, because I can submit it Monday night at 10 o'clock, rather than waiting till the office is open. And so you got, the sooner you know, the sooner your people can coordinate.
Yeah.
But it's also just a matter of, I've had a resident who said two weeks in a row, their garbage wasn't picked up, and then husband chased down the garbage truck to have them come back and get it. And I know yesterday also in Apple Orchard, there was yard waste missed. I mean, so this was two sides of the village yesterday that were missed, where sections were missed. So, I mean, I'm hoping that it was 99.1 is kind of where I want to, I'd like, I think most residents would like to see that being hit every week, and I'm certain you would too.
Yeah.
But it doesn't seem like it's happening enough.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be curious if you could provide us with what your pickup accuracy percentage is over the last three months or so, just so we can get an idea of, on a weekly basis, is it trending up? Is it just there's, here, it's, it's one offs, or is it something else?
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can try, I, oh, it might take me a little bit to get that, because I'm gonna have to pull a bunch of different data, but I can, I can get that over.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Mark, that's based on complaints too.
Yeah.
So if they want to complain, but it was missed.
Yeah, and I think that's, yeah, I know, I understand.
Which is not true.
So it may not be a true number, but it at least gives us some idea.
Not true representation of the number.
Yeah, they, it doesn't, how do they know, like, does your percentage take into account if one, one person complains on the street, but the entire street wasn't collected? Is it just that one complaint that's logged as a miss, or is it that entire street that's logged as a miss? Yeah, there's a lot of variability.
Right.
But I think also on our end, it's a matter of stressing to the public, if you don't get picked up, either call the village or submit it, even if your neighbor did. And that way, the urgency is there, presented to the, to priority, and the data will be more accurate.
Anything else?
Brett, first of all, we appreciate you coming in tonight. I'm sure this probably gets old, it's probably a regular part of your duties to go to meetings like this, and, and, and hear a lot of complaints, so, but and I appreciate you've always been very accessible to me, and I've tried to get ahold of you, in fact, we talked today.
Yep.
And I just want to follow up on a couple things we talked about today. First of all, my understanding is that, that the priority is, you, you've developed or you're developing a new portal, a 2.0?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the one where the residents can come in.
And then we're in process of getting us access to that right now, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're gonna be hearing from your IT guy as to?
Yep, we're gonna be hearing from Austin.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll follow up with him tomorrow morning.
Okay, okay, great. And then the other thing we talked about is, we had been, we, when I say we, the village, we had been advising the residents that the last day for yard waste pickup was gonna be Monday, the 24th.
Yep.
And that's kind of based upon the way we had always done things in the past with GFL, that our last yard waste pickup would be the last Monday in November.
Yeah.
But again, we talked today, and my understanding is that you found a landfill that will accept yard waste for an additional week, so we're, we have an additional week that we can get our leaves out to the curb, is that right?
I mean, November 24th, that's, that's kind of early in the first place, but, and in, I did find in the contract that, you know, we're, what we can do. So we, we decided December 1st is a better day, instead of November 24th, because as, you know, you and I spoke about, you have, I think Thanksgiving's on the, yeah. You have Thanksgiving that week, people are off that weekend, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. As long as there's not snow on the ground, I'm sure there's As long as there's not snow on the ground, I'm sure there's going to be leaves falling or stuff that needs to be cleaned up. So it makes more sense to do it that way rather than doing it the week before.
I guess, thinking more about it too, if you know, and maybe this isn't a fair question for you, what's the difference going to be between the portal access that we had before and the 2.0, the upgraded access?
So, yeah, so the, you're able to see residents that submit tickets in. Right now, or before, it was only the village that could submit tickets in. Now residents can do it, they don't have to call up to the village, so we're taking that one step out. And also, you know, that was said before, you can do it at any time. The resident can do it at any time during the day and, you know, it'll get responded to. But also, the village can see those that come in, too.
Okay. So for, as it stands right now, we have a link on the village website to Priority's website, and there is a way for anyone, either the village or a resident, to log a complaint through your website.
Yep.
But then you're saying that the 2.0, we're going to be actually, both the village and residents will be able to go directly into the portal?
No, residents cannot go into the portal. It'll be the village that can see it. Residents can submit the tickets and they'll get an email or a text update, but the village is the only people who can see what's in the portal.
Okay, so the residents would continue to submit their complaints through the Priority website?
Yep.
Okay. Where you list email address and telephone number and authorization for communication and all those kind of things.
Yep.
But then we'll have the ability, we, the village, will be able to go into the portal. We can log a complaint directly into the portal, which we can do right now.
Yeah.
But then we'll also see not only the complaints that we've logged, we, the village, have logged, but also any that the residents have logged as well.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, I appreciate the clarification.
Yep, and it's all about transparency, right? Being able to be more transparent with the village about the complaints that have come in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate your time.
Would you guys like me back in a couple of months? I mean, no, seriously, if you want me to come back, to give an update, just like I gave, I don't mind doing that at all.
Yeah, I mean, if you can, if you want to figure out, maybe February?
February, good.
Yeah.
I think it's good to keep it till we get to the ninety-nine point one.
Yeah.
It's a good thing to keep the updates coming.
Yeah, no, I completely agree.
And if the consensus in the council is that we don't need to have you back, then we'll be talking before then anyway, I'm sure.
I think we'll get there, so.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Excuse me.
All right, 10B, Mr. Powell.
Yes, good evening, council. Before I get into my letter, I want to make sure that council understands decisions that I've made over the years. I've placed two major priorities in the village, Glengarry Road being a major road, and so that is a priority, and then the Oak Island Bridge is another priority. So they are done very first in the village. So Glengarry Road is first, and I think you were copied on the map that I provide every year. Every year I change that. So I start at Glengarry Road and the bridge, and one year I go clockwise around the village and the next year I go counterclockwise around the village, so that every road has an opportunity to be hit at least every other year. That's the overall plan. A&R Seal Coating really takes care of the village even better than that. If you do your math, you'll probably see that we virtually use the entire budget each year. And that's because A&R actually does all the roads. So even though I've got them starting on Glengarry Road and the bridge, they go clockwise or counterclockwise around the village, but they hit every road in the village. And then if they've gone over budget, they back down and only invoice us for the budget. If they go under the budget, of course, then they don't get paid for that. But every year, you'll find that they actually go over the budget and then back down to the budget itself. So I wanted to let you know that that's the quality of the company that we're working with. So not only do they do a very good job in the village, but quite frankly, they're almost half of what the next lowest bidder typically is when we bid this out. That being said, and certainly if council has any questions, I'm here to answer them, but per my letter of November 5th, I'm recommending that the village pay A&R Seal Coating for their invoice in the amount of $21,999.60, separated down for $13,999.80 in the minor road fund and $7,999.80 on the major roads, and this is from budgeted funds.
Motion to approve the payment of $21,999.60 to A&R Seal Co.
Second. Motion by Deaf, second by O'Brien to pay A&R. Any discussions?
Mike, I have some concerns. I've been walking through the village a little bit, and it looks like Woodlawn, Roselawn, and Terry were not, either weren't addressed at all or not addressed very well. I saw the truck on Brisbane, saw it doing work on Brisbane, despite that it's an older road and significantly cracked and they did parts of it. But then when I looked at Woodlawn, Roselawn, Terry, which are less than 10 years old, there's plenty of cracks that weren't seal-coated.
All right, and I have to put a provision on that. I don't follow them around the entire day, but I do spot check through the village. I obviously didn't do a very good job of spot checking those. I will take that to A&R because they've assured me that they do all the roads in the village. And so thank you for pointing that out, and I will see if I can't get them back to do those three roads, at the very least.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second.
Should we be holding a retainer for that additional work?
Well, keep in mind that although we don't go and measure every single linear footage of cracks, I've watched them do it. So what my biggest concern is, they're very concerned about their reputation, and they've represented to me that they will do the entire village for the budgeted amount. And so I'm very confident that they did this much, at least this much work. I'm just concerned that they typically go over and do all the roads in the village. So you can certainly do what you want and do some retention, but I believe they've earned the money that they've invoiced, and I'd like them to continue going over the amount that they've earned. So that's my goal.
So we shouldn't expect an additional invoice for any additional work that they're doing?
Oh, absolutely not. That would not come with my recommendation. They can invoice all they want, but that would not come with my recommendation for payment.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second, to pay A&R. So if you have a roll call, please.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Jeremini?
Yes.
Kid Nicky?
Yes.
McNutt?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Leiborn?
Yes.
All right, we can get to Pam. Number 11, public hearings. 2026 CD BG funding.
Motion to open public hearing for this 2026 CD BG funding.
And we have a motion to open in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We're open regarding the 2026 funding for CD BG funding. Say that 10 times real fast.
Motion to close the hearing for the 2026 CD BG funding.
Second. Motion to close in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Close. B, public hearings for Parks and Rec Master Plan Updates.
Also, before we open the public hearing, Chris Nordstrom from Carolina Wirtman, who's was our consultant on this and did yeoman's work on this project, I don't know if he has any initial comments that he'd like to make.
Thank you for having me here tonight. For those of you who haven't gone through the recreation plan process before, two main reasons why we do this. First off, obviously, is to get you something so you have a five-year plan ahead of you that you can use for, as a guideline for the types of improvements that you want to do within your parks. I would don't like to say more importantly, but realistically, it's more importantly, is that it makes you eligible for grant funding through the DNR. So there are three main grant programs out there. You successfully used their program after the last recreation plan to help fund the new playground equipment to the Clear Millar Park. So that's something that you have a real tangible benefit from doing this. From what we saw from the residents this year, very similar to what we saw with the previous recreation plan, maintenance was the top priority. And I think you've done a really good job with that based on the satisfaction rates that I saw from the survey results, where it was like 92%, excuse me, 100% saying that they were very satisfied or at least somewhat satisfied with Clear Millar Park and the other parks. Second priority for the residents was trail access. This is very common. It's something that you see in communities all over southeast Michigan. Every rec plan I've done over the past 10 years, that's been a top priority. What's a little bit different this time is that your residents said they would like to have access to the Michigan Airlines Trail, which is just a little bit south of here. So working with your neighbors to see if you can't develop some sort of an agreement or have a plan in place showing that this is the route we would like to develop so that we can connect to your roads or your pathways and then down to that airline trail is going to be huge. The third thing that people were saying was, and this kind of goes back to the maintenance idea, just starting to improve some of the smaller features that are at Clear Millar Park. You've got that great new playground right now, but a lot of older pieces that are still hanging around that probably are due for replacement. It may take a little bit more organization. I'm going to step back a little because that feedback is really strong. But it's not quite as dramatic a change as what we saw with the last one. And I'm forgetting my fourth one already. The fourth one was just protecting natural resources. Again, very consistent with what we saw on the previous plan. You've got this wonderful natural asset right there, and people want to make sure they've got access to it. So, you know, as you look ahead, there might be opportunities for developing a pocket park of some sort or a small park on the south side, which is a little bit underserved. But otherwise, from what I've saw from your residents, people are very happy with the park system you have. They want to see you keep going in the direction you've been going, and I think you deserve a lot of credit for having people who are very, very interested in making Wolverine like a special place to be. Do you have any questions for me? Then I'll step aside and I'll let the public talk.
Thank you. Motion to open the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update.
Second by Newman to open. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Parks and Rec Master Plan Update is open.
Open for anybody to turn up anything?
Yes, sir.
Anything they want?
It has to do with the park plan? Parks and Rec. It's the Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Motion to close the public hearing for Parks and Rec Master Plan Update.
Second. Motion to close in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Closed. 12, new business. The 2026 CD BG funding.
Council, as indicated in my memo dated November 7th, we've just conducted the required public hearing on the village's use of the block grant funding for the upcoming project year for project year 2026. As indicated in the memo, I've been out to Oakland County for a couple of meetings. There have been some changes in the way that the county approaches its block grant funding. As I've explained, smaller communities like the village used to be considered what they called threshold communities, and there was basically a minimal allocation of money that was given to the threshold communities every year. And then bigger communities would get more amount of, more funding based upon a formula that was developed by the federal government and then administered by the county. But the county is trying to encourage what they're calling now infrastructure or public facility projects, and also to encourage communities to work together on those kind of projects. So while there is still going to be some minimal funding that's given to all communities, there are no quote threshold communities anymore, but there will be some minimal funding that can be used for what are considered to be public service projects. But above and beyond that, the county, on a competitive basis, will be awarding more money for the infrastructure or public facility projects. As part of the process with the larger infrastructure and public facility projects, the county has reminded us all that there are time constraints and how quickly the money has to be used once it's allocated. The bottom line is that to have an infrastructure or public facility project that's going to obtain county approval, you don't necessarily have to be shovel-ready, but you've got to be pretty close to shovel-ready. You have to have a fairly detailed plan for what you want to have done. Now, the changes that the county has made in the program, we just learned of these in August initially, and then we had a follow-up meeting in October. So we really don't have any of the larger projects that we could even potentially submit for consideration. So for the upcoming project year for 2026, again, we're looking at public service projects, and what the county has indicated is we can expect to obtain roughly the same amount of money that we did as a threshold community in the past. So at this point, what we're figuring is we're going to be getting ballpark about $7,000 again. As I've indicated in the memo in the past, we split that funding between funding for victims of domestic violence services provided by Haven, and then also for a contribution to the county's home improvement program, because village residents who are income-eligible do take advantage of that program every year. So there is a benefit to the village in terms of us contributing some of our block grant funding into the home improvement program. We've looked at some other alternatives in the past, and we tried to funnel some of our money to Leia, but there was an issue with Leia being able to provide all the information that the federal government requires in order for the village to be reimbursed for the expenditure on a block grant funding. Similarly, we tried to use some of the funding for the handicap accessible doors on the restroom downstairs, but the contractor was happy to do the job and take the payment, but then didn't want to provide all the documentation that we needed to meet federal requirements. So again, I think those were both good efforts on our parts, good intention, but I think the best course for us to take for the upcoming year is to fall back on what's been a working model for us, and that is to split our allocation between a contribution to Haven and a contribution to the county's home improvement program. So that's the resolution that I provided in my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Motion to accept the resolution as presented.
Second. I have a motion to accept the resolution in a second. Motion by Deaf, second by Newman. Any discussion? We have a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes.
Doug? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Master Plan Update.
Motion to accept the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update as presented within the memorandum.
I wash my duff to accept. Second. Second by Newman. Any discussion?
The only comment I would make is that the proposed master plan, in addition to being reviewed initially by a subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation Board, excuse me, and then recommended for further consideration, including public review... me, and then recommended for further consideration, including public review, the plan has also been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Board, and they recommended approval without any changes. The proposed plan was reviewed by the Village Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to any modifications that Parks and Rec recommended, but again, there weren't any. So again, we've got both bodies that have taken a look at this, have recommended approval. So again, from the administration's standpoint, we're recommending approval of the resolution contained in my memorandum dated November 7th.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. So we're all calling that too? Thank you.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Nutt?
Yes.
Yermini?
Yes.
Liborn?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Nicky?
Yes.
I see our planning commission recommendations. Recommend council adopt the Parks and Rec Master Plan update with any minor modifications the Parks and Rec Board may recommend.
So moved.
And number two, recommend council accept the resignation of James Clark.
Counsel, just one comment in this. Typically, we run a resignation through the body itself so they can make a recommendation to council as to normally accept the resignation. In this particular case, Jim Clark has moved out of the village, as he's indicated. The planning commission at this point isn't scheduled to meet again until January at the earliest. So in hopes of maybe being able to get that spot filled, I made the decision to more or less jump over the planning commission and bring the resignation directly to council for your acceptance.
Motion to accept the resignation of James Clark.
Second.
Motion to accept in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you, James, for your service. Beautification recommendations. Request that council release $400 budgeted funds for winter greenery and decorations. Motion to release $400 budgeted funds for winter greenery and decorations because...
Second.
Motion by Newman, second by O'Brien. Any discussions? Another roll call, please.
Yes.
Nutt?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Liborn?
Yes.
Nicky?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation Board recommendations. Recommend council adopt the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. Number two, recommend council submit an application for the mural with partners in public art with the DIA. And then request council to release budgeted funds for snacks with Santa.
I'll make a motion. Are we accepted? Our recommendations?
We have a motion to accept all three recommendations?
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Motion by Duff, second by O'Brien. Any discussions? I wave a roll call.
It'd be really cool if we got that, that DIA thing.
It would be.
It'd be real cool.
The only comment I'll make on that is I've had some follow-up communication with Stephanie, whose email is in the file about the program. And the DIA typically awards three projects per year. And as of early October, when I was last in contact with her, they already had two in the pipeline for next year. So she said there's a possibility that, you know, we'll get ours in as quickly as we can, but there may be somebody that beats us in the door. But she said if that's the case, then they hold the applications on file for the following year.
Okay.
So she said if we don't get a project for '26, there's a very good chance that we'll be first in line for 2027. The only qualification is, you know, this year we did the Inside Out program where we had the replications of the artwork on display throughout the village. You can't do both the same year. So if, either next year or the year after that, if we are successful on the mural program, we will not be eligible for the Inside Out program that year. But we'll get something, if council approves the resolution, I'll get, I'll get the application filed by the deadline on Friday, and we'll see where it goes.
Dave, do you have an idea of which building, if we were to be awarded, the mural would go on?
I believe what the Parks and Recreation Board talked about was on the concession building over at Claire Miller. So, and I guess if council has any thoughts, one side or two sides, my thought would be to ask for two, if we can get two.
Any sizes they want to paint, I would love for them to paint.
As you can.
If we do get awarded on that, do we have the opportunity to view what the artwork will be before it's done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they select the artist, but anything that's done is subject to our approval.
Okay.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second to accept all three. Roll call, please. Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Yermini?
Yes.
Liborn?
Yes.
Nicky?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
All right. I have cyber liability and data breach coverage insurance.
Counsel, this is our recommendation to renew our cyber liability and data breach coverage for 2026. It's a nominal increase, $35 over what the rate was for coverage for this year.
Motion to accept the memorandum as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to accept it by, a second by Yermini. Any discussions? So we're all calling that one.
Newman?
Yes.
Liborn?
Yes.
Nicky?
Yes.
Yermini?
Yes.
O'Brien? Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Nutt? Yes.
All right, we're to G. The sign ordinance discussion is requested by councilperson Liborn.
So I think we all had received that email correspondence, just trying to get a better understanding of what the sign ordinance entails. And thinking through it, I guess I would like to understand a better, better understanding of the spirit of the ordinance, why it was put in place, maybe what other municipalities do when signs are put into yards to support local businesses that might have done work in a residence. So I just wanted to start that discussion to see if there might be a happy medium that we can support these local businesses and also make sure that our residents aren't getting letters in the mail for having a sign in their yard supporting the business that has just done some work in their yard. So I don't know if there's another municipality that we can look to, to get a better understanding of what other townships, cities might be doing for sign ordinance, or why this was put in place in the first place.
So the section, "Any advertising signs within a residential district," is actually no longer in your ordinance? You did a series of sign ordinance amendments last fall, and they don't appear to be codified yet.
Okay.
So, and I just realized that, but we'll have to look into that. There's a couple sections. So what happened was back in, I want to say 2018, there was a case that came out that required, oops, I'm sorry. It's going to take me a while. There was a case that came out that required all sign legislation to be content neutral. And so you could still regulate sign size, placement, the number of signs that would be allowed, but you could no longer regulate if you had to read the sign to discern what it was. For instance, here, in order to know it's an advertising sign, and you'd have to read that, and it discriminates against resident, residents for advertising signs. So this was one of the provisions that was removed. The temporary political signs was another one that was removed. So you had some changes in order to update your code to be compliant with that new law so that your ordinances would be content neutral. And honestly, all of the communities in the state of Michigan and other states did the same within the last decade or so. It just, you know, most community sign ordinances are pretty comprehensive, so, and there was kind of a wait-and-see approach at first when that case came out, this is a Reed's case it was called, when that case came out to see if that was going to hold up. And it did. So now, more aggressively, communities are changing. But that, "Any advertising signs within a residential district are prohibited," is no longer in there. That might solve your question to begin with.
Was it possible that our code enforcement officer is operating on old rules?
Yeah.
He's probably operating based upon what we have on record as, as the village code. When in fact, the update hasn't gone through the...
Right.
...codification process yet, so.
I'm not sure what the process is with American Legal Council, the company that does your codification. Sometimes it's, you know, every quarter or once a year. I don't know how often they get sent in, but it just doesn't look like it's in there yet, so.
It is old because it's got the previous council on there and on the first page of it and everything.
Oh, right, yeah. I mean, I was looking at this effective date. Some of those sections were changed in 2014, but some of them are from, still from like '81.
Yeah, the band was from the original.
Right.
I went back and looked at everything, and it was from '81.
Yeah. So we just need to look into that codification issue.
Well, maybe what we can do is I can check and see where we stand in terms of the actual codification process. But then maybe Jennifer, you can take a look at the ordinance as it has been amended and is it, is actually in effect now?
Right. And see what...
See if this is still an issue.
Right. I mean, we'll look at it.
So it has been amended and is in effect, how do we get our officer to...
Well, he just, he need, so he needs to just have the most updated ordinance, you know. But it should be online as well so people have notice of what that is. You'd have a hard time prosecuting with, you know, someone arguing, hey, back in November, you, council, adopted changes to this, and you just issued me a violation. So, I mean, we just need to look into it.
Procedure.
So we'll look into it, and then, I mean, we probably should have more information for you at next month's meeting, I would think.
Yeah, thank you.
Good call. Because I, I, yeah.
One H. Administrator Gillen requests council move to close session to discuss attorney-client privileged communication.
Motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, a second by Newman. All in favor?
Well, we do need a roll call.
We do need, okay, for the close session. Roll call. Thank you.
Yes.
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 Newman?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Topics for November 26, 2025 work session.
Motion for a go.
Second.
I have a motion for a go by, a second by O'Brien. Any discussions?
Do you think at some point we need to talk about the Davy Tree report that we just keep kicking down the road? Because we're going to be at the next budget review, right, in a few months, and here we are, a whole year. I mean, do we know? Yeah, I just think it would be helpful if we spent some time talking through that. And I don't know that it needs to be in November, but I noted on the DPW report that they spent, it looked like, a good amount of time grinding stumps and cutting trees, and I just don't think we have a good understanding as a council what that looks like with the Davy Tree report. Are we tackling that, are we not? Are these outside of that report? Have we already gone through the budget that was set aside for this year?
We have that added as an item for the next regular meeting. And perhaps get an update from Andy.
We can try that, maybe a push, just because he's off on a medical leave right now and probably will be through the first of December. So if we can pull something together, we will. Otherwise, it might have to wait until January, so.
Let's just set it for January, then.
So as a regular business item in January?
Yep.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem, so.
Are we okay with that?
Yep.
So we do have a motion on table two forgo the work session for November 26 of 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? No work session. Our pending business. First one's Ventura Drive parking striping. And the second one is a pending lake park house water quality.
Counsel, the first item was tabled last month. Counsel wanted to have an opportunity to review the information that Mr. Daly had submitted. I would indicate subsequent to that, we did have two site visits with three members of council on two different days. So anyone who wanted to could take a closer look at the layout out there, so.
I would renew my motion to, to hear that? Or a vote on that? Sorry. I would renew my motion, I made the motion the last time.
Yes, okay.
To hear a vote on that item.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Second.
We had a motion to, for the Ventura Drive parking, and a second on it. Could you just reiterate your motion so everybody can...
To, to complete Ventura Drive parking striping as presented within the package. I believe that it was the TIA recommendation, correct?
I think it was Mr. Powell's recommendation to extend the area of crosshatching to the west.
In addition to what the TIA had recommended, sorry.
So it's additional, I was making it wider, is that not correct?
Yes, to redo the striping that's out there currently and then extending striping towards the west in a fashion that is about five, six feet closer to the property lines, still not all the way up to the property lines.
I believe we had several residents from the area that were not in favor of that, if I recall correctly. So we have a motion to repave and extend, and a second on that. So a motion by Duff, second by, as Nicky. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, with the motion, did you say repave, Mike? I just couldn't...
Restrip. Oh, restripe.
Just restripe, okay, thank you.
Existing and adding.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's not just existing, it's also adding.
Thank you.
Would we just do it on the one side, or would we do it on both sides? When we were on the site visit, we were talking about, so that it was on both the east and the west side of that, that the crosshatching would be expanded closer to the property lines, so there would be that symmetry, and it would be more defined, and then additionally increasing the size of the actual, you know, parking lines by about a couple feet, if I recall.
That is correct. Instead of approximately three feet around the entire cul-de-sac area, we'd be making it between four and five feet to match all the way around, and then extend it a little further on the west side.
And I would just say, based on the site visit, we had the opportunity to see a vehicle parked in a fashion where it was, to some degree, affecting the ability of somebody to enter or exit 2377. And we, I at least felt that with the way it was parked, that it was unfair. It would be a problem. I wouldn't want that if my neighbor were parking that way, if that was the case. And by putting this there, this crosshatching, it makes it very definitive that the village does not, does not allow that and doesn't want that to happen, and does give recourse for anybody who's bothered by that to, if somebody is illegally parked there, to call the police and have that issue addressed. It doesn't go as far as some people would like with what we could do, but I do think that this would be sufficient to allow, to address this. And at that point, going through with this, that would be the end of it for this council in dealing with this issue.
I was also there, and extending the striping, I think that's more than enough for us to satisfy the situation.
Okay. For clarification, and we have diagrams and everything else, when you guys are talking about extending the striping proposal, is striping is extended on the existing... about extending the striping proposal, is striping is, is extended on the existing blacktop pavement and not in any, the road material, not any driveway material?
The village didn't lay it down, it's not getting painted. It only painted on things the village has laid down.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, we have a motion and then a second. Any other discussion?
I guess, from an engineering standpoint, Mike, is there any cons to, with the striping? If we were to move, if it was a motion to move forward and it was approved?
I, I see no cons. It will restrict a little more of the area to park on the west side of that cul-de-sac area, but it is still within the village-owned right-of-way and it will not, it will not hamper any of the parking on the, what, what people would perceive as their driveways.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
It's been a long time coming. I think everybody wants to see an end to this. And I agree, I think it's a good resolution.
Okay, be clear with the motion is to restripe and extend it and to on material only laid down by the village to be clear. Any other discussion with that before we vote?
If I could ask counsel just for some direction, this time of the year is not the best time to add painting to existing pavement. It doesn't adhere quite as well, and the snowplows have a tendency to wear that off when, when you're being snowplowed, so I guess I could use some
I would add a friendly that it's to your discretion when the
Okay.
most appropriate time to add this would be.
I, I will talk to the professionals and get their advice, but it may be next spring.
I guess just one more time from Chief, from your perspective, Chief, is this going to make a difference from a no parking situation to have additional striping in your experience?
As long as it's going to be visible in the streets, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a huge need for this. I think you're going to kind of like mark up almost, I don't want to say graffiti, but really going to mark up more. If there are, if we were seeing more parking issues up there and people were calling us and complaining and people were parking in those areas, then we could afford, but we haven't seen anything. There have been no calls for service, no reports, so I, I'm not really sure I see the necessity for it. I just don't want to see the street get marked up a lot more than
Well, I also, if my memory serves me right, when we were standing there, it's, it was pretty worn, the striping that is currently there is pretty worn, you know, and it would
What is that area due for repaving? Is that?
Oh, no, the street is not anticipated to be paved for another six to eight years, something like that, so we're way ahead of time for that.
Would the striping hold up as is if we did nothing?
As, as council pointed out, it is, it's disappearing, and so it is in need of additional repainting for next spring at the very least.
Is there a desire to open? I think we have some people that might want to make some comments to this item, so.
Motion to open to the public.
A motion to open, Jeremy, a second by Duff regarding the Agenda Item 13A. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. We are open.
Tom Daly, 2377 Ventura. I'd like to know what you would like me to do when people are parked in the driveway that is blocking half of my driveway, 12 feet out, two to 12 feet out. In some places, it's two feet, in some places it's 12. So what would you like me to do under those circumstances? Also, just FYI, you got, there's, there's been seven years of striping there that have done absolutely nothing. People park wherever they want, so I think you, you guys get to make whatever decision you want to make, but I don't think anybody believes that putting more parking stripes in that area, anybody there believes that putting more parking stripes there is going to prevent any, anybody, anything from happening. I can, I could continue of calling the last six months from people parking over the parkings, but I've, I've tried to work with you guys and give you guys a design that actually works, that actually protects rights that aren't even actually there for people that want to have significant portions of the right-of-way used for driving, right? So we can, we can keep doing this thing with the parking stripes because we did it in 2018 and it didn't work, and I called for three years and nobody did anything. They said you can drive around them, right? And I stopped calling and started documenting. I gave you guys all those documents back in February. It's going to continue to happen, right? But more importantly, even the parking striping, if you're only going to parking stripe where the, where the current pavement of the village is, right? It doesn't even take into consideration that the driveway itself doesn't meet the requirements of the county or the state, number one, right, and what they do as a standard, right? And it doesn't take into consideration that it puts a car, less than a mid-sized car, being able to back out in that area on one half of that driveway that's, that's, that's going out there. I'm not sure how that wasn't noticed when everybody was out there, but take a look at that, honestly. It's over half, it goes out when you do that, over half of the driveway at a distance of 12 feet. A mid-sized car is 16. Pickup trucks 20 or 22, so therefore, there's only one way to drive out of that, out of that, which is to go on a 45-degree angle out and around that, if it's even parked right in the driveway itself. Thank you. So again, I'd like an answer as to what you want me to do. If, if this is what you guys want me to do, what do you want me to do when there's a car parked in the driveway, 2 to 12 feet in front of my driveway, legally parked on, on another person's driveway? How would you like me to deal with it?
I can't speak for council. I think the administration's position is the same as it's always been, that we would ask that you call the police, and I understand that you said that you did for years and years. We have a different police chief right now and he's indicated that, that they will respond and they will take appropriate action.
You're talking about the parking stripe where it's going to say no parking. If I call the police and there's somebody parked on a driveway that's paved, on a paved driveway, and you're not paving a striping that says no parking, Chief, what are you going to do? What are you going to tell me?
If it's parked, if it's legally parked in a driveway?
On a paved cement driveway.
And it's not infringing upon the no parking zone?
Yeah.
I don't know much we can do.
So this is why I've been sitting here for another year now, because all of the things that the village has proposed in the past 11 years, right, haven't addressed the original problem, which was so much of the public property has been turned into private property for parking, right, that the people have to pull out of, or have, that are ingressing or egressing my property or the property, let me just put it this way, the property of 2377, have to go around other people to get in and out of that property. So by putting striping out, we're not correcting the, the issue that currently exists. This is what I actually talked about when I, when I mentioned this all on the front part of the discussion. The driveway itself goes halfway across the adjacent driveway. It limits the access of a car to pull out in that area to 12 feet, which is not even long enough for a mid-sized car to get all the way out. If you guys had that in front of every one of your driveways, right, and you went to pull out, right, where now you have 20 to 30 feet of, of area, right, you guys have no problem. I've got to literally pull around a vehicle if somebody's parked legally in the driveway next to me. This is why the center line or the, the property line thing was brought into play, right, so that people didn't have that issue. So I don't understand, again, I, I, you guys can do whatever you want as far as striping. I stood up here two months ago and said, striping is not going to do anything because people don't follow it, right? You guys have hundreds of pictures of people that are parked out there over striping over the last 11 years, or over the last seven years that they were put. Nobody else wants the striping. What we need to do is make a clear, clear portion that says, this is where people can park, this is where people can't park, but if you put parking in front of somebody else's driveway, that actually legally goes against an MCL that says you can't park in front of somebody's driveway. Thank you.
Motion to close to the public?
Good motion to close.
Can I get an answer to my question? What would you like me to do if somebody is parking in that manner?
I think I gave you an answer, Mr. Daly.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. I directed you to call the police.
And the police said they won't do anything.
I didn't, I didn't say that I wouldn't say that we, we won't do anything. We'll come up there and take a look and see what we can do and try and mediate the situation as best we can.
We did that for seven years. We did that for the first three years until I stopped calling. I get, I get it, I'm not trying to
Queen of order, Mr. President.
Mr. Daly, we did, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Two meetings ago, we sat up here and you did express the previous administration didn't, and police administration didn't respond, and you agreed at that meeting that you would call when there was an issue. You did. Has there been any calls since then? Okay.
Has there been anybody that's parked there? Yes, one. You guys all parked there when you came out and looked at it, and I could have called the police, but we're in the middle of resolving this issue, and over the last
Correct, correct. It was just a request.
So
It was a request, and, and you made that agreement that if there was an issue, to give the current police administration the opportunity, okay, so, and you did agree to that, and so, and I understand we're trying to resolve this with, you know, that information, would have helped, correct? It would, it would have helped, I mean, if there's, there's been no calls, so it's, it's not based on that.
So you're going to say two months, in which, in which case I could have called one time, but didn't, as I'm actually just saying, as we deliberate, what, what could possibly be done, right? So one time in two months, I could have called, but I didn't call, right, versus seven years of ongoing issues where nothing was done, and, and we're going to wash it away with just that?
That's everyone washing it away off? I didn't say that.
No, no, I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
That we're going to wash, I'm not saying we're washing.
Are we not going to consider that this behavior has been ongoing for seven years after our council, again, not you,
Mm-hmm.
thought that paving or that striping that was going to work, reclassifying it as a no parking zone was going to work, and policing it was going to work? And it didn't work for seven years. Now we're going to say, because for two months, we, we haven't had any calls, we're not, that we're going to just
Oh, no, absolutely not. It was just an agreement that, that you had made, that's if there was an issues in those two months that you would call.
Exactly.
Okay, so, and there, there, there wasn't, there were, there were no calls. That's a fact. It's not saying we're washing anything else out.
No, no, no.
Okay, so I'm not saying, so that's
I'm trying to work on this issue and not
Correct, correct.
And that's, that's what I'm just telling you, and I could have called at least once, but I know, right, but I didn't, because I'm trying to work with the council in good faith. I'm trying to work with the village to get the public property that is there used as it was dedicated to be used. Not to make a parking lot, to make it public free, which it was dedicated for. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. We have a motion to close in a second. This is for the Ventura parking, is what this is for. Motion to close in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Close. I do have one quick question back on this for Jennifer. Regarding the concerns, is there anything that was done illegally or not above par when, when all this was done? When it was originally done? Was it within all the ordinance regulations and at the time that it was No, the, the actual driveway. The actual driveway when it was, was put in.
Um, well, there was a variance for that.
Okay.
And there's been a dispute over that since that time.
Okay.
Mr. Powell, didn't you say that two feet were added on to the width of the driveway at Mr. Daly's residence?
If you compare the geometrics of the driveways 15 years ago and now, there is a shift in the geometrics of Mr. Daly's driveway, more towards the south instead of aimed towards the center of the cul-de-sac. So there appears to be a modification in the geometrics of the driveways, of that driveway since it was first put in, correct?
Would that have required a, a permit or a variance of some sort?
No, that was prior to the permits being requested by the village.
Okay.
Hang on a second. I'm sorry, so if there's been
Queen of order, Mr. President.
This is, there's been no change to my driveway in years. I don't even know where this part of the conversation is coming off. Number two, there was never
Mr. Daly, we're not, we're not, we're not open. I, I know, appreciate it. We're not open.
There's two things that I stated that are untrue. There was never a variance that had anything to do about the driveways that were in either of these two divisions. A variance had nothing to do with it.
So the placement of both driveways, there is no violation of any ordinances or anything else?
No, I mean, with the paving project, you mean, or?
No, with, with, just with the driveways themselves, and there's another picture. There's no violations, no, you know, because I, I mean, it wasn't around when they were put in.
Right, so years ago, we had pulled up the plat
Mm-hmm.
And all of these properties down here are encroaching in what is supposed to be the right-of-way. So the road really isn't where the entire right-of-way is. The driveways are all extending into the, which Mr. Powell has said many times, and is often common, especially in older subdivisions and areas like that. So nothing has been done wrong, it's just how that road was developed. It's not wrong for not meeting county and state standards. It doesn't need to do that. It's followed all procedure.
Can we change the road right-of-way? Is that
No, it's platted.
Okay.
The road is platted, so there'd need to be a replat, but the village wouldn't do that.
Okay. Okay, still on the board, we have the motion and a second. Motion would be to restripe and add some, or alter it a little bit so it's on road paving. We'll have a second on that. Any other discussion?
So there are other residents in this village that have to share driveways, right? Like walking around the village, there, there, this is not a unique situation. It's unique in the way maybe that it's coming together, but I mean, there's even, there's two properties on Ventura that share a driveway, right? Entering and exiting
Yes.
The same. I mean, we parked next to it when we were out there doing our site visits, so I just, I noticed it again when we were
I noticed it again when we were up there. Just thinking back to my time that I served on zoning, and we always talk about, is this a unique situation? I don't know. I don't know if it is. I don't know, I think we have a lot of properties that are really unique, the way that these roads come together. I'm just having a hard time deciding what the right answer is.
Respectfully, I think the question is, what's the best answer? I don't think there's a right or a wrong.
You're right.
As your engineer, I'd like to make a statement, and I've held back for a while. Every homeowner within the village has the right to apply to the village for a permit to modify his or her driveway. We see several of them a week in which they want to repave their driveway, reconfigure their driveway, put a circle drive in, and we evaluate every one of those. The administrator and I then go over them, and a permit is issued by the village for any modification a property owner may want to make, for whatever reason that property owner may want to make it. This is not unlike that. So any property owner on Ventura can request the village to modify his or her geometrics on their driveway, which might solve a problem, might create a problem, but they have the right to request a modification of their driveway to solve a problem. And the village then can issue that permit to modify that driveway within the road right of way. Remember, every driveway in the village uses the road right of way as part of their driveway. So the geometrics within the road right of way, the village has control over that. So any property owner, and quite frankly, it was stated today, that when a new home goes in on the end of Ventura, they're going to want to modify their driveway to accommodate a new home. That's going to change the geometrics of that driveway for that new home on the end of Ventura or any street. They will come to the village and we will evaluate it to make sure that meets the policy and the ordinance of the village, and doesn't cause additional problems. So any homeowner can modify their driveway with permission and a permit from the village to solve a problem that he or she might perceive there is. And that this is not, this is not, it's not, it can be done in this case as well. So I just needed to state that because the village doesn't have control over driveways on private property. Property owners do. So a driveway on their own property can be changed, and they can request a modification in the village right of way as well. So it's not up to the village to modify a driveway, it's up to the property owner. Thank you.
This particular one, 2373, was done prior to that?
It was done...
Prior to needing that road right of way permit.
Based upon the evaluation of the aerials, there appears to be a modification that was done prior to the need of a permit. But that doesn't mean that it can't be modified again. Correct.
Any other discussion?
Just when we were there, Mr. Powell was kind enough to illegally park his vehicle for us so that we could get a better perspective on what it looked like. Just so happened that Mr. Daley was leaving at one point and was able to exit his driveway. He was able to do so, but unquestionably, it was obstructed. The part of the vehicle that was obstructing was in the section that we're now talking about painting over. So we were able to see that, yes, he can still get out, but that's not the simplest of case. It doesn't matter if he can still get out, it's going to get out comfortably, and it was a smaller vehicle too. But this is why, partially what fuels this decision, is that we did see, yes, the way that it was parked would be very problematic, and we don't want that for any resident if we can manage that. And so that's where we're going. Because he does have the entire road ending to exit into, not just straight out. So there is ability to exit the driveway, even if there is obstruction. We are trying to minimize that obstruction as well, without inconveniencing the rest of the residents in that area. And they're, what they've done to their work, their properties, legally so.
Any other discussion?
So just a question. If this motion, let's say this does not pass, are we still restriping the striping that is there?
Oh, that is not the motion that I made.
I'm thinking from a future perspective, with my...
We would have to make a different motion.
So it's not on the docket to repaint?
The motion that I proposed...
I understand your motion, I'm saying future.
That's what we're voting on right now.
Well, yeah, if we need to restripe it, we're...
If we want to make a, if we want to...
Right.
Not pass this one and make another motion, we can. But this one is specifically for the additions that Mr. Powell had pointed out.
From the administration's standpoint, if the motion that's on the table doesn't pass, then I would ask council to adopt a separate motion directing the engineer to having the area that is currently striped, restripped. I think we need that clarification.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay, once again, the motion on the board is to restripe and add extra to the areas of the current road material. And there was a second on that.
And to allow discretion in terms of when it's best to do it.
Esprit, discretion of the timing. Any other discussion? Let's have a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
All right. Mr. President, I make a motion that we restripe the existing striping that's fading, and with the provision that Mr. Powell had done when it's appropriate to do it.
Second that.
And the motion on the table to restrict the existing, with discretion, Mr. Powell, by Mr. Duff, and second by O'Brien. Any discussions on that? Another roll call.
Yes.
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 On the Penny Lake Pump House water quality issue, as I indicated before, Mr. Stone is currently on a medical leave, so this continues to be work in progress on our end.
We also try to make this a regular item on the January meeting?
Thank you. All right, second call to the public. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council regarding village business.
Motion to open to the public.
A motion to open by Duff.
Second.
Second by Newman. All in favor?
Aye.
And just a kind reminder that it's five-minute time limit. Here are open second call.
Dave Laborin, 4335, Shakin. The page in front of you is my bay. And this bay was one of our places where we had ice skating rink. But guess what happened? My neighbor started his engine and put all that buck there. Now, how far down are we on the lake? How many more inches do we have to go? Does anybody know? I don't know right now. But it sounds to me like the lakes are going to go down even further.
About six inches.
About six inches, okay. So in other words, this whole bay is going to be all buck right now. Because this gentleman that does not belong in this park decided to make a channel for himself by throwing, the part of it is, when he took his boat up, he couldn't get started his engine. He ran that motor some amount long and clogged up his whole engine. But anyhow, the next page, we've read this a couple of times, but I really like you folks to understand it, because I was surprised how many times repairing rights and non-repairing rights was discussed in these chambers. I've been going through, I have all the, my passouts through my council years and afterwards. And here's the law when it comes to this park. This park does not deprive a repairing owner of rights associated with his or her ownership of the waterfront. A repairing owner, among other things, controls any temporary or periodically exposed bottom land to the water's edge, wherever it may be, at any time, and holds the land secure against trespassers. So when all this water goes out, they're trespassing, because that property is considered the same as we come into the park. Now, anyhow, I sold an RV to one of our residents in the village, and after we completed the sale, they asked me some questions. And one of the questions asked is, are they allowed to park at a park? And I said, well, it depends. Well, I'll tell you why. One of the park owners that's part of that association brought Elsworth to there to have him move the car out of that park. I guess they've been doing it that way. But apparently, this police chief does not believe, he's not involved with that kind of things. According to this, if you, if it's land, he's trespassing. And I don't know why, and then after the chief talked to him, he put a 30-foot dock. So he's not doing too well with me, the chief, and I have no problem. The next page, I always check people to see, you know, where the comments are. Here's Chief George stating, "If a boat is docked on a lot that you don't own, then we can issue a ticket." George did not issue a ticket. He lied to us. And you know why he lied? He needed a man that is a police officer to be on the lake. Well, I was so much involved that I said, "You're going to get it." Because one of the things we were told when I was dealing with DNR, that all these parks, if they start creating marinas for a small lake like this, you're not going to recognize it. And they shouldn't, unless they get permits. And the next page, you can see what it looks like. You've had it a couple of times. And then you can see this one. Again, that gentleman parked his pontoon all year long on park property. And at that time, it was, I would appreciate if you folks, repairing rights have been talked through this village many times, and nobody's taken action. Even Sekowitz said repairing rights should be, and non-repairing rights should be exposed so people do not follow, people should follow the rule. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, Tom Daley, 2377 Ventura. I guess I got a couple of comments here. First of all, if you guys, if the process is that there's going to be discussion and there's going to be statements made at the council, and those, and there are statements that are being made by the council that are incorrect, or people that are representing the village are incorrect, there needs to be some format to bring that forward and address it at the time. I don't know what that is, but I request that the council actually does that. I say that because I've already made two comments about things that were stated that were untrue. Another one that was stated that was untrue is that every driveway in the village does not, or go, every driveway in the village goes over the road right of way. And that's completely false, because there's two of them, which I mentioned in my first statement, that are less than 50 feet away from there, that do not go out at all into or potentially maybe six to eight inches into the right of way. I'm sure there are many more that don't. So that is not a right, that is a desire, and it's something that as the village, that we allow people to do because it makes sense in those areas. There are areas where it doesn't make sense. The second is, very few of them go out 30 feet into the right of way, right? So if you're going to look at what's going on in this case here, this is 30 feet wide by 30 feet in one, on the one end, out into a, into a right of way, okay? You want to give somebody the right to park a car in the right of way that much, but you're actually asking me to take two feet to 12 feet over half of the area in front of my property. That doesn't seem like that's in public interest of public land use. That seems a little bit skewed for what we're actually supposed to be doing as a village to protect public use, okay? And then finally, my questions again go back to, why are you asking me to do something different that, different than none of you have to do? You don't ask yourselves to drive out of the driveway around people. That's why the MCL is enforced at your houses. And yet, that MCL can't be enforced if you put a legal driveway halfway across another driveway, and it's two to 12 feet out in front of it. It's actually blocking, it's actually against the, it's actually against what the MCL is saying that you, that we should be doing as a village and as an entity within the state. So we still have a problem, and I don't know how to solve it. I've tried to do my best to give you guys an alternative that still provides access and park for people to park in that right of way at the location, but doesn't create problems blocking that public use to the other people that need it. Thank you.
Dave Runwick, 685, Armenia. This is the 18 Grand Sound System.
I kind of came because of the sign ordinance. Wondered if it was going to be open to the public, obviously it wasn't. I was just going to suggest, before you go forward, could the administrator contact the ex-council members and/or board members who put this thing in place? And find out why it was necessary? Because we had a whole bunch of things from about the early 2000s on that I would call vanity laws put into place. This was one of them. I wasn't even aware of it. I was on council, and I wasn't even aware of this. So, but on the subject of vanity laws, that kicks over to the discussion with Brett Quiddick. I hate to go back 15 years ago, but 15 years ago, over the objection of a majority of citizens present, the village council was going to collect a trash. And the village would contract with... And that the village would contract with the current trash hall of them, and now, years later, with Priority. To say that, it seems somewhat counterproductive and counterintuitive to say that if the citizens have a complaint, they need to contact Priority because the citizens don't contract Priority. I have a problem with my electric service. I definitely call DTE Energy. I don't call the village, Consumers Energy. I call the gas company. But the village is the contractor. I am the contractor with DTE and Consumers, but the village contracts Priority. So if there are problems, that should come from, we're not paying Priority, we're paying the village. That's why people, I, I have talked to a lot of people about the trash fee, and that's why people call the village. Dave, you were saying that, you know, folks tend to feel they need to call the village, or that they should call the village. Well, they should, because council, the village, is the one that is the contractor for Priority. It's pretty simple, really. So I, I wouldn't let that surprise you when people keep calling the village rather than trying to use a direct link with someone that we're not even contracting. Only makes sense. Thank you.
Dave, can I just say one thing about that?
Sure.
Um, the administrative assistants, they, they do take everyone's complaints, and they do log in to Priority and put them up there. And they even go a step further sometimes. If they see it, like on the, the Facebook page that someone's had a problem with their trash, they actually go on the computer, on that portal, and say, "Did it get logged in as a complaint?" And then, oh, sure enough, it was logged in as complaint, so it could be dealt with. So...
No, no, I'm, I'm not denying that the village is following through.
Okay.
But to say that, no, the people should be doing this, no, the people should not be doing this. We are not the contractors, the village is.
Well, some people prefer to do it themselves.
Yeah, and I do think it gives residents, because if the village is closed, they gotta wait till the next day, so it does give them the opportunity to log it prior to the village opening, and they can still call the village, absolutely. But this allows a quicker response time for the residents if they choose to do that. But we're not saying they have to do that.
This is a service that comes through the village.
Correct. We're not saying they have to do that. They can still call the village, but it gives them the opportunity to have a quicker response if they choose to. So it's, it's there for them to do. We're not saying they have to, we're saying that it's, it's an opportunity for them to do that, so it's a quicker response time.
What really sounded like that was putting a burden on the village, and no, the village, the village put this burden on themselves.
Yeah, this, this is a way for the residents to get a faster response time if the village is already closed. So, yeah, they don't, they don't have to. It's not mandatory by any means. But if they choose to use it, it's there for their use.
Okay.
Is what it is.
But they can, they can still call the village.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Good enough. It didn't sound like that, or I apologize.
Okay, that's all right. Glad we got that clear.
Hi, I'm 1311, Joe Donzillo, 1311 Guinevere. I've lived in that house for 25 years, and I probably have more leaves than anybody in the village. I can't, I retired this summer, so I've had a lot of free time, but I can't, I've got health issues, and I can't rake my leaves. I've got a riding lawnmower that I bag, all right? They got this little stupid rule that says, "You can't put the bags by the road until Sunday night." Probably Friday night because the ordinance guy isn't going around the village looking after five, five o'clock. But they got this, I can't, if it's, if it's sunny on Wednesday, and I put the leaves behind the fir tree in my front yard, in my circle driveway, then it pours rain on Thursday, and everything gets soaking wet, then I gotta go Saturday morning and move them bags to put them out in front of my... I got a telephone post, I share a driveway, so I put all these bags in front of my house. I usually put up to 100 bags of leaves in my driveway. I'm up to 86 right now.
Wow.
And it's been a good year, so I've got, I've got 40 more bags to fill up yet, all right? I'm going to go, oh, and so I put, right, Saturday morning, I'm getting up, and I'm picking up these wet bags of leaves, some are kinda heavy, and putting them in front of my, in the, in the driveway. So I'm thinking, okay, I'm good, none of the bags broke on me and stuff like this. Well, lo and behold, I come by Monday night, I only picked up half the damn bags, all right? I called the village, I said, "You know, they only picked up half my bags. Oh, we'll do, we'll do something about it." Well, them bags are still in front of my driveway. Now, why isn't the ordinance guy coming around giving me a ticket? 'Cause them bags are out by, in front of my driveway, because Priority didn't pick them up. That's why I was a little bit late coming in. I was talking to the Priority guy out in, in, in the, in the driveway. He gave me his card, he says, "Well, if you have a problem, call me." I said, "Well, why should I have a problem?" I said, "Do you give these guys a time where if they stop in front of a house, and they only got five minutes to throw the bags in, and they use up their five minutes, so they left because they couldn't pick the rest in?" He said, "No, no, they're not timed." I said, "Then why in the hell didn't they pick the rest of them up?" He said, "Well, I don't know, maybe the truck was full." All right, that's no excuse. I'm just saying, I think this is a stupid rule, 'cause I don't put them lined up along the road. And if you go, and if you see the people that do rake the leaves to the road for the leaf pickup by the ha or wherever the hell it is, you know, I see them out there, I've seen them out by the road on Wednesday night, out by the road, all right? The leaves are there, I mean, there's no bags, but the leaves are there. So I'm, I'm just saying, I, I think it's a stupid little rule, and physically, if it's a, if it's a nice day, like tomorrow's gonna be a nice day, and Friday's gonna be a nice day, and I still got a hell of a lot of leaves in my yard, they're gonna be out by my pole, I ain't gonna take a chance because it might rain Sunday night or something like that to move them. That's my bitch, all right? Has anybody better got a problem with that? Chief, you're not an ordinance guy, you don't do that, 'cause you say, "It's not my job."
Let me remind you that you're here to address the council.
All right.
Let me remind you this is the second public, call the public, you're here to address the council, I understand.
I love it. Elsworth would've said the same thing. All right, physically, I can't, I'm, I'm just saying, this is what it's gonna, if a guy gives me a, 'cause he last, last, I mean, about three weeks ago, I put them out there Friday afternoon, you know, 'cause I was doing it Friday morning, I put it out there. Then I went in the house, and I went out to dinner or something, I come back, and I look, and damn, there's already a red tag on my door. If you do this again, we're gonna give you a ticket. Now, I, you know, I'm gonna put them out there, physically, I can't keep moving them like this. I'm gonna put them out there, if you wanna give me a damn ticket, give me a damn ticket. But it's, to me, it's a stupid rule. They're not in the road, they're in my driveway, but I got a lot of leaves. Do we, anybody have a problem with this?
I don't.
Michael, I'm seeing you shaking your head.
I don't have a problem with it.
You having a problem with it?
Yeah.
So what do I do if I come home Friday, Friday afternoon, and I see there's a tag on my door 'cause I got leaves out by my road? Say, "Here, shove it up your ass."
It's a, it's a great question, and I don't have an answer for you right now.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't tell you to do that. So, that's not a place where I'd tell you to stick it, for sure. And I think there can be special considerations when, when necessary.
Dave Labor, 2335 Sheikin.
David, congratulations on the new sound system. Now, if we can fix this so we can see it, I won't have to have an eye appointment. I had an ear appointment, and I was okay, but now I gotta see these damn things. Joanne and I took the jet ski out, and Joanne jumped behind the jet ski without me knowing that she didn't put her jacket on. But anyhow, we were going down, and we got a ticket. She felt so bad. I said, "Well, I don't feel bad, you're just gonna have to pay for it." But the thing that bothered me is that David gave her one ticket. He told her that, it's his discretion, I will give your friend a ticket. I had no knowledge of that. Then I get an email from the chief, and he tells me, "I could've given you a ticket, but I didn't. It wasn't you that didn't give me a ticket, it was your officer, sir. I never asked for any favors from a police department, any police department. By the way, I hired more police people that were going to college for their police than probably most of the people around." And they, I had them working in Oakland County Sheriff's, I mean, all the sheriff's departments around here, police departments, state, I even have FBI agent work for me. So I know what's, it's the service that you're not required to give makes you different. And right now, that's not the kind of service you're giving, sir. And he told us, "Just call us." Well, I told David, "Come down when you're on the water, stop by my house," and I told him where I was, because that's probably the most dangerous part of the lake. They're coming within 20, 25 feet of the property. Guess what? I saw Dave going right down the road, the water, never stopped to work. I can give you some of the conversations the officers have had with me. I'm preserving it until I'm getting everything together, 'cause unless this village changes how they are taking care of the customers... We had a young lady in her 40s, and you were here, you heard her, she was afraid to go to the police department because of retaliation. Are you kidding me? A young lady was just nice as it could be. I don't even know, but out of the, and we had eight guys up here, and not one of them asked her, "What do you mean by retaliation?", to find out who did that to her. Nobody. I had a, from Joanne, a message that we had a contractor that was kinda going after her, and she gave me a security telling me I need help. It took me less, it took me less time to go from Brighton to give her aid to my house on Sheikin than these guys came to my house to help her. So don't tell me these guys are, they're gonna take care of the customers. They're not customer-oriented. I worked for a company for 33 years, and the customers real, I realized that they are the ones that paid my salary. So I had to say that.
Motion to close the public.
Second.
Motion to close by us, second by O'Brien. All favor.
Close. I can call this closed. This is council leads and reports. Parks and Rec.
Uh, we had a discussion about the, we extended the terms for Diane and Amanda. We voted on the Halloween entries and had some nice winners, some very good entries this year. We reviewed the park signs that council had approved, the directional signs, and Jennifer's working on those, and we're expecting those probably in the spring. But they did go through a little more detail on them. Linda made sure to meet with her so that they could finalize little details and things on it. Reviewed the master plan, had a discussion on the farmer's market. We had 20 events. Only one got severely rained out for the year. Overall, went quite well, generated roughly almost $4,000 on the year, and then about $300 were spent on signage and the like. Had the blood drive in October, hit our goal, so that was great to see. Next one is coming up soon on December 8th, from 2 to 6. We've got the holiday decorating contest coming up, and that will be, the deadline for that will be December 11th. News should be coming out for that soon. Snacks with Santa, we plan for that. That should be, that is coming up on December 13th. We did look into getting a reindeer, but unfortunately, the reindeer was booked, so we, we're not able to pull that off. That'd been awesome. That'd have been really cool. We have letters to Santa coming up as well. That usually starts, I think, the week after Thanksgiving. More information will be coming out for that. And we are doing a peanut butter and jelly drive for the second year in a row to benefit Hospitality House and anybody, you know, going on winter vacation, all that for the kids. That starts this coming Monday and will end on December 15th. And then the Veterans Committee ordered some bricks. They are in, they're actually in my car, we'll be putting them in soon. And we had the lines replaced on several of the flagpoles, they were getting jammed up, they wouldn't crank at all, so those have been replaced, and we were able to lower them to half-staff in honor of Vice President, the late Vice President Cheney. And that was about it.
Sony Gourd.
We have two cases, but we were only able to hear one of them. I believe we have two cases this month, one case, I only hear one. I, I don't know, 'cause I won't be able to attend the meeting, so that's it.
Water management board.
We had discussions about extending appointments. We reappointed Martini to the chair position of the board. We did have, actually, which was really nice, too, a progressive amount, can give us a whole entire breakdown of our yearly survey. So a year-end report, how much we spent, condition of our lake, the water quality inside of it. As always, we're always fighting the weeds and invasive species and whatnot. We did have some breakdowns this year, but they did overall have us in a mesotropic state for the years. We averaged out a TSI rating of 41. A little bit on the lower side this year, but we are still maintaining that balance in between the swimming pool and then an overgrown swamp right in the target range that we're looking for. So overall, after surveys were done, we did a very good job this year. There were some overgrowth in weeds, and there were issues with harvesters and such reasons for that that could be explained, but, yeah, we actually did a pretty solid job this year with the lakes.
Does Ryan typically come in at the end of the year for a water board presentation?
He did last year. I think there was some discussion about that at the Water Management Board meeting, but I didn't hear from Ryan that he was ready to give the presentation, so if I hear something that he is, we'll get him on an agenda, so.
Planning commission, we went over, and we, which we talked about earlier, we approved the, we recommended to the council to approve the master plan for Parks and Rec. And we, we will not be meeting again for the next few meetings.
Chief. On behalf of Sergeant Morasko and his family, he just wanted me to pass along the appreciation that he has received, the love and support from the council and from the community, and the overwhelming response that he has gotten since his diagnosis. So just wanted me to pass along that to you, and other than that, have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December.
Treasure Hanson.
Rena is gonna be coming next week, and we're gonna start the audit. I mean, we've already started the audit process, but we'll be meeting for the day on Thursday, and I'm looking forward to a, a possibly December audit, but probably January. And I think that's it for the treasurer's office, so. Happy, be good to see everyone at the appreciation dinner coming up, so.
A couple of quick comments. A day late, but yesterday was Veterans Day, and thanks to all the veterans in the community for their service. Second, our thoughts and prayers continue to be with John Morasko and his family. And finally, we do have the Thanksgiving holiday coming up. I hope everyone and their families has a safe and happy holiday. Thank you.
Other comments, Mr. Councilman Jereminy.
I'd like to thank Chris Nordstrom for his work on the master plan. I thought it was really just great work, and he really does a great job in making the whole process for us seamless and easy.
whole process for us seamless and easy. I'd also like to thank Brett Quiddick for coming in. I know he has no idea what he's going to be facing when he comes in, so appreciate his time. All the, you know, all my thoughts and prayers to Sergeant Morosco. Looking forward to getting my couple bottles of bourbon from Benstein Liquor that are in honor of him at the end of the week here. Hope everybody's getting one at least. And then, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
What kind of bourbon is in the bottles? Do we know, Mike?
I think it's Woodford.
There, okay, thank you.
Thoughts and prayers for Morosco and his family. Have that on. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and for all the hunters next week, be safe in the woods.
I hope everybody enjoys their Thanksgiving, and you have some wonderful family time, and just continue to pray for Sergeant Morosco and, and support him in any way possible.
Hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. We can also reiterate that we are, thoughts and prayers and thinking about John right now, so hope he has a easy process, he reaches the other side Thursday, so.
Hospitality House is hosting a drive-through food distribution this Friday, November 14th, from 11 to 1. This event is open to anyone in the community facing food insecurity. You do not need to be a current client to participate. Participants should follow signage when entering the parking lot. My thoughts are with Sergeant Morosco and his family as he faces his battle with courage and resilience. We stand with him and support and hope. As we reflect on service and sacrifice, I also want to extend my deepest gratitude to all those veterans. Thank you for your dedication, bravery, and unwavering commitment to our country. We had another productive meeting today at Leah's board meeting. I am, however, frustrated both as a board member and council member that Commerce Township voted to discontinue funding for Leah. Leah supports Wolverine Lake, Wald Lake, Wixom, and Commerce Township students and families. And I think it's a shame that Commerce Township elected officials voted to discontinue this vital funding. And happy Thanksgiving.
I think we're going to try, I think we're going to try to get Commerce to change their minds. But, yeah, we were disappointed to hear that news. Not much more than I can add that everybody else hasn't already said. My heart goes out to John and his family. As one cancer survivor, hopefully to another, he'll, he'll get through this. My husband and I went out to dinner Tuesday night to celebrate Veterans Day, and we went out with three other couples, they're all veterans, and we went to Applebee's, and they were so nice to everybody. It was, it was just incredible how, how nice everybody was to the veterans that were there. And just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hopefully, the government shutdown is, is going through okay, because we're flying to Florida for Thanksgiving. Knock on wood. So, thank you.
Just Sergeant Morosco, thoughts and prayers, and stay strong, you got this. Veterans, thank you for your service and for allowing us to live our lives the way we do. And then, happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Any motion to go to close session? We already have one? We have one, thank you.
It's council's pleasure. We can stay down here, or we can go upstairs.